Meeting is called to order at 7:43 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion and a second that the board approves the June 11th, 2024 agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion and a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I please have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending April 30th, 2024 be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? There are no special reports. Helen, you're up.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Helen.
In terms of district-wide updates, the Buddy Up Olympics were held on Friday at PHS, and students K through 12 celebrated their abilities and strengths while practicing teamwork. At PHS, yearbooks have been distributed, and everyone's backpack is a little heavier as students collect signatures from their friends. The senior breakfast was on Friday, and students enjoyed the mythical grilled bagels. Sources of Strength hosted a spikeball tournament and raised over $200 for the Shepherd Home. Students performed spoken word pieces, dances, and songs at the Juneteenth celebration. And Ceramics students have the honor of having their work displayed at Canal Town Coffee Roosters, where anyone can see how talented the art department is. And the Random Acts of Kindness Club painted rocks and distributed them near the main entrance so that every student can start their day with an optimistic message. At Bay Trail, they welcomed their eighth graders home on Friday, May 31st, as they returned from their Washington DC adventure. There were so many stories and smiles as they recounted their visits and favorite experiences. The Bay Trail DEI team has continued to bring representation across the school for June, which includes celebrations of Caribbean American Heritage Month, Pride Month, and Juneteenth. On Wednesday, June 5th, all grade-level lunches enjoyed a frozen flood of teachers being cooled off with ice water. Don't worry, they volunteered. Many thanks to the teachers who chilled out on a hot day for the students' enjoyment. And on Friday, June 7th, despite the rain, the seventh-grade band and orchestra students had the opportunity to play beautiful music while performing at Seabreeze Music Days. At Scribner, 82 Scribner graduates participated in the senior parade, where they walked the halls of their elementary school and were honored by current students. Friday is the Flag Day Assembly, where first-grade classes will lead the school in patriotic songs, standard bearers will be named, and Scribner staff member yearbook dedication will be revealed. And Monday is the annual Scribner Fun Day. At COBLES, on Tuesday, June 4th, the school held their annual COBLES Arts and Education Festival. The halls were full of families admiring student artwork, listening to ensembles, waiting for face painting from COBLES alumni, and watching RIT professor Peter Pinkus spin pottery with some help from students. On Thursday, June 6th, the PTA-sponsored annual ice cream social took place. Luckily, the rain stayed away, so the fun could remain outside with carnival games, demonstrations from the PHS robotics team, lots of food, and of course, ice cream from roosters. At Indian Landing, the IO Carnival and Fun Day are both coming up, which students and teachers are so excited for. And Thursday, June 20th, is the Indian Landing Day of Reflection and Hope, where students are encouraged to wear class colors. At Harris Hill, students took field trips on the Colonial Bell for fourth-grade classes and Camp Arrowhead for fifth-grade classes. The annual fifth-grade talent show was held recently, as students displayed their many awesome talents. At the Harris Hill Arts Fest, student artwork was displayed throughout the building, live music was played, and the community came together to honor the arts program. Third-grade students selected a band or orchestra instrument to play for fourth grade, and the kindergarten students were honored at the year-end celebration. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, superintendent, your part.
Wonderful, thank you. Nice job, Helen. I have a couple of student and staff honors, a brief Penfield Central School District update, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl, who was very upset that he didn't get to talk at the last meeting, and so he has some business updates for us. Honors Convocation, as we've heard, more than 300 PHS students were recognized for their outstanding achievement at the Honors Convocation ceremonies. Congratulations to all of the winners. Our Scholar-Athlete Awards, just always great to look and say that all of Penfield's spring athletic teams earn Scholar-Athlete honors. Congratulations to baseball, softball, boys and girls track, boys tennis, boys and girls lacrosse, girls' flag football, and boys golf. Our Athlete Recognition Ceremony recognized 39 seniors who will be continuing their athletic career in college at the Athlete Recognition Ceremony on June 5th. 12 students also signed scholarships to Division I and Division II schools. Congratulations to all the student athletes who were honored. And just a couple of updates, as we heard from Helen. Buddy Olympics, students and staff had a great time participating in the annual Buddy Olympics on June 7th. I can't stress enough how amazing it is that, again, once again, this happens so many times, the weather called for rain, it was gonna rain, the weather shifted, and it did start raining at the exact moment the last student was boarding a bus back to their elementary school. It was absolutely perfect, so great job to our athletes, to our buddies, and to all the staff that come to support. Pay It Forward Challenge, the district made positivity a priority during the month of May with its Pay It Forward Challenge. Staff members across the district were encouraged to fill out cards with positive messages for their coworkers. Each card was passed on to up to six individuals before being returned, and the HR office received a total of 695 positivity cards, which equals 4,170 acts of kindness. And the names of all of those recognized were collected, and then there was a drawing, and six lucky individuals were selected as winners of a Wegmans gift card. So it was really great. That's a picture of just all of the cards that came in. It was a great thing, so thank you to HR, the district office, who put all this together. My last update is around a thank you for your service, and we do have two board members who will be retiring from the board. I do have some words, if, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna start, and you just have to sit and listen to me for a minute.
Do I need Kleenex?
No, no. But I will tell you that...
They want to start with Mark first, though.
Okay, so my speech is about both of you, but is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I wanted to just take a few minutes to honor and celebrate the remarkable contributions of Mrs. Catherine Dean and Mr. Mark Elidge, who have served our Penfield Central School District Board of Education with unwavering dedication and passion. Over 12 years and 11 years, I think it's 12 for Catherine and 11 for Mark, they've been steadfast advocates for our students, teachers, staff, families, and our community, always striving to enhance the quality of education in our district. Both amazing individuals have served on their time as the board, as the vice president of the board, as well as the president of the board. They have also been members of countless committees and attending advocacy trips to Albany and Monroe County School Board Association meetings. Their leadership has not only shaped our schools, but also inspired all of us to aim higher and work harder for the benefit of our children. Catherine and Mark are both longtime members of the district's Facilities Committee, and their impact will be seen for generations to come. The lights on the turf field, the new classrooms in our elementary schools, and secure vestibules in every school are just a few examples of the accomplishments completed thanks to these two dedicated board members. Additionally, the district's new transportation facility will stand and support our communities for at least the next 75 years, because the old one's about 75 years old, and that one, every time I drive by, I will think of our Facilities Committee and Mark and Catherine, so thank you. Catherine also spent many years of service on the Policy Committee and always focused on ensuring our policies met legal obligations and were consistent across all areas of the district. Notice I use the word "ensuring."
Yes, I noticed.
Mark has spent many years on our Legislative Committee, and his love of the political and advocacy aspects of the board will be greatly missed. Board meetings where we go over all of the advocacy from New York State School Board is amazing, and people don't realize what board members do. So 12 years and 11 years of community public service is something to be forever proud of. You both have led this district through sunny days and dark storms. You've never wavered in your support for our adults and our students. You listen, you learn, you dig deeper, and you always show up to support all things Penfield. You're truly cheerleaders for this district, which is so important. As we bid farewell to Catherine and Mark, we extend our deepest gratitude for their tireless efforts and commitment. Your legacy will continue to resonate in our classrooms and halls for years to come. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors and hope that you enjoy a well-deserved retirement from the board. So thank you, Catherine and Mark, for your extraordinary service and for leaving an enduring mark on your educational community. And I do have, we have a gift from the district, and you have a gift from me as well. My ad lib piece of this little speech is that you two were on the board that made a pretty wild and crazy decision to hire me as superintendent 10 years ago, something that I will never forget, and I've had the pleasure of working with you in many different capacities and can never really say thank you enough for the unwavering support of the district and for me, and so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
I'll put this down here.
Thank you.
And I'll put more flowers up here.
Oh, thank you. Oh, they're beautiful. Thank you.
Mark, you don't get flowers, but you do get this, and then I just have a little something to say thank you to both of you very, very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, I do need Kleenex.
All right, so we will start with Mark. You want to start, and I'll finish it off?
Sure. I would just like to thank you for your service. All of my kids, I believe, have had you as a board member, so I appreciate the time and the dedication. When I say dedication, like I know it's a lot, so I really appreciate that. I think the biggest thing that I really appreciate about you, Mark, is your ability to quietly lead. And you just lead by example. You've given us a vision of the past and what it used to be like when there's questions, when we're newer board members and have questions, so I just really appreciate that input that you always provide. And I will echo what Tom said, like your excitement around the legislative part and the legal part is really inspiring, so just thank you so much, and I just really hope you get to enjoy some time with your feet up and relaxing.
Oh, I didn't know if Catherine wanted, really wanted to go down that way, and I can...
Um...
Do you want to, did you want to say something to Mark next?
No, thank you. We can, I can't talk anyway.
So, Mark, I do, I would echo what Kristin said, like your leadership ability and just helping us out in times when we maybe struggled as a board, and just finding our footing with wording and things like that that we said, it's been very appreciative, or I've appreciated a lot. And just your ability to explain things, like when, I remember when we went to Indian Landing, and you were just explaining what the building looked like before, you know, the capital projects, and it just gave us a lot of insight as to, you know, how much those capital projects really, you know, benefit the students and benefit our district. So thank you just for everything that you've done and all the work that you've put in. Did you want to say anything? Yeah?
I get to talk to you now. Mark, just short and sweet, I appreciate you, I love how your brain works, and I'll miss you.
Short and sweet as well, I appreciate your leadership. You do have a quiet way of leading that I do respect. And I also respect your knowledge, you're very knowledgeable, and also your passion when you bring your notes back from the conferences or different events that you attend, whether it's state or local, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for making me feel welcome, and your dedication and how invested you are is so inspiring, and I'm really grateful for it as a representative and as a student, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can move on to Catherine, and I'll start. Catherine, thank you for just your years of service. I know the district and the students have benefited from your just support and your knowledge and, you know, your advocacy, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I would just echo similarly, like you've been on the board for a really long time, and just as a parent that, whose children have been, were students, while you were here, I appreciate that your dedication and your commitment to the district to continue to serve even when you weren't necessarily vested with your own kiddos. I really appreciate the time and the dedication that you've continued to put forward, so thank you.
Catherine, my dear, thank you. Thank you for everything. Make good choices, stay out of trouble.
Do I have to?
No, just try. It's the effort that counts, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I share the same sentiments as Krista. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Looking back on all of the great things that I have been lucky enough to experience as a student, a lot of it makes sense knowing that there were people like you in the corners of people like me, so thank you.
That was so sweet, Helen.
Yes.
Yeah? So, thank you, everybody. You know, this concludes my 11 years of service on the Board of Education. Over that time, I have grown and learned about the needs of our students while working with the district and community. There have been a lot of changes in education over those 11 years. The one thing that hasn't changed is the district's commitment to the health, safety, and success of each student, be it those working directly with the students, those working behind the scenes, or those leading the districts. They work to fulfill the purpose of public education and embody the district's mission and vision statements. I am proud of what we have done over the years. We have embraced the evolving needs of our students to help them achieve their potential while incorporating numerous and ever-changing state and federal regulations. One of the things I have learned is that each student has their own personal needs. Sometimes a student's needs are dramatically different from that of your child, so, so much so, that it's difficult to comprehend these other needs. I'm asking you to support that student's needs as much as you'd want the others to support those of your child. If we as a community can do that, all of our children will benefit. It has been a pleasure working with the faculty, staff, administration, Dr. Putnam, and leadership team, and my fellow past and present board members. Thanks to them, I am confident in the future of the Penfield Central School District.
Thank you.
I do have a few things I'd like to say, if I can get through it. I don't know if I can go through it. First, I want to say I have so enjoyed working with you, and all of you up there, and some of the ones who came before, some of those sitting up there, and of course, I've really enjoyed working with you, Tom. Mark expressed a lot of what I'm feeling right now, and we have two new board members coming in to take our place, and I'm very happy to say that I know them both. I know them both pretty well, and the community is in good hands. I feel like two fresh new board members with experience and dedication, I think they will serve Penfield well. But before I leave, I would like Patrick Moriarty and Megan Callan, I'd like to leave them a couple of tips, a few little tips for when they come aboard. And one of the things I would like to point out is, or to advise, is that they learn and completely understand their role as a board member, because as Mark alluded to, well, stated as fact, which it is, and that is, so much has changed. And when COVID hit, it was, I mean, it was a train wreck from every direction, and so much happened that created chaos and confusion, and how the district did shine during all of that, which I will forever be impressed by and very proud of. However, in the larger, bigger picture outside of the district, thoughts about what it means to be a board member shifted, and so there are misconceptions as to what it means to be a board member, and so for Pat and Megan, I would say, learn and completely understand your role. And NISBA, New York State School Board Association, offers many educational opportunities, as you know, you just got a certification, and that's, they're designed to help us all be better board members, so I recommend to both of you that you take advantage of as many of those as you can. And as new issues come up, like Mark said, things can change, and NISBA offers great guidance, as does the Monroe County School Boards Association, so I recommend they both do that. In all that you do, I recommend you strive for collaborative decisions and work together to come to consensus. A school board is no place for personal agendas, and the rules for school boards are different from other elected positions, and that is a big misconception. So the board works as one body, and no one board member carries more weight than any other. So learn from each other and defer to more senior members of the board and look to them for guidance, respect their experience, as they are here to help you be successful. You may have ideas, and I know when I came on the board, you know, I had ideas, and everybody's very excited when they're new in the role, and a lot of new ideas have brought us into different and better directions. However, some things work and some things don't, and this is where the experienced members on the board can be very helpful, and they also understand the history and past practices of the board. And then remember, you are here for the students as well as the taxpayers. You will have a responsibility to all the students and not select groups. You are stewards to them all. And I feel like I have a certain advantage, knowing the two of them personally, and I have every confidence they can do this, but in order to make their roles and coming into the roles smoother, those are my tips and recommendations. I'd like to say that Penfield is an amazing school district, one that served my family well, and one I am very proud to have served for the past 12 years. Please excuse my emotion. I am so honored at the trust the community has placed in me, and I thank the community most sincerely. I will miss being on the board, but I'm also looking forward to pursuing other interests, and that time has now come. I wish Pat Moriarty and Megan Callan much good luck. I will miss working with all of you, but I am looking forward to the next steps, so thank you, everyone.
That concludes superintendent reports.
No.
That does not conclude superintendent reports. A little caught off guard with all those wonderful words. Now over to Dr. Driffl.
Thank you. What an act to follow. So we have four action items on the board's docket for approval this evening, the first of which is a handful of change orders. One of those change orders is the same one that we had two meetings ago, it was just a typo in the amount, so there was no change on that one. There is a large change order on there, it's an electrical issue, it was a design flaw, so as the architects missed it, they're working to remedy the cost in different ways, but I wanted the board to be aware of that. We have to, in the last five or six years now, put forward year-end fund balance authorizations to the board, which I'll explore in a second. We have a renewal of an intermunicipal agreement, so this is a fuel-sharing agreement with the town of Penfield, something we've been doing for many years, this extends it one more year. And then we have a renewal of a service contract, so this is with the Organization Center for Youth, that have been in the district for a number of years now, and this continues their service in all of our schools through next school year. So for the year-end fund balance authorizations, this is put into place so the Board of Education, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, has an understanding of where we are financially, and that when we get the audit in September, there's no surprises. So it is an estimate at this point, it is looking like another strong financial year for Penfield. So in order of, the resolution explains it more detail, this is kind of the abridged version, but these are all in order of priority with dollars available at year-end. So the number one thing we'll do is fund the assigned fund balance for next year at that $1.7 million figure, which is what we communicated throughout the budget development process. We'll retain the 4% unassigned fund balance for next year, that's 4.7% of next year's budget, $4.7 million of next year's budget is that 4%. Like we've done in the last couple of years, we're going to fund a cash transfer to the capital project, so we're doing this in lieu of borrowing. So by sending the dollars over, we don't have to spend the 4% that, you know, currently we'd have to pay on interest, and as we've explained in the past, the state also assumes that all project dollars are borrowed, so when you use cash, they actually give you an assumed interest rate and aid over the next 15, 20 years. So we save on the interest on the front end, and we also get more aid on the back end by doing the cash, the cash funding as opposed to a borrowing. So this is the fifth year of funding the TRS Reserve, so that reserve will be fully funded, so we're putting in $736,000 this year. The Board of Education, a couple months ago, we sold a piece of land on Atlantic Avenue, $400,000. We're going to put that $400,000 in the 2021 capital reserve for buildings so that those monies can go towards future facilities improvements for academic programming. We are going to increase the liability reserve to $275,000. That just scales with the 3% of budget that we're statured, we're allowed to carry. $30,000 to the employee benefit and accrued liability reserve, this essentially just matches a balance sheet liability we carry for compensated absences, that's on our audit. And then $2 million to the newly community authorized 2024 bus purchase reserve. So we just took out $1.3 million to buy buses, we're hoping to put $2 million back into the new reserve to start funding that as we work towards the electric bus mandate. That's not too far off here, 2027, all buses must be electric. And that is it for me this evening. Any discussions around those action items?
Board members, questions, comments? Mark?
I just want to say, I've said it before, and I've said it, I'll say it again, you know, we're fortunate as a district and a community to be able to make these long-term fiscal plans that keep us in a strong standing and well-prepared for any unexpected things that come up, and I'm, you know, I'm really happy to see that the money we receive from the sale of land goes to the capital reserve for buildings, so you know, it is, you know, it is capital money for a capital project. So once again, I think this is exactly where we need to be, we handle the money the way we need to handle it, and it's all to the benefit of our district.
Any last?
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you for that.
That concludes superintendent reports.
All right, we are on 6A, change orders. May I have a motion and a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I have a motion and a second that the following year-end 2023, '24 fund balance authorizations be approved?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? All in favor, none opposed? May I have a se, a motion in a second, excuse me, that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to enter into the intermunicipal fuel agreement with the town of Penfield for the provision of vehicular refueling for the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Dan, you had just said about this that we're going to renew it for one more year. I know we go year to year, is there any, is that the intention, is just to keep going year to year? Because of the way you phrase that, I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, in general, we strive to have one-year agreements, just so that we're not binding future boards of education, and I think most municipalities understand that.
Yeah.
So the intention would be, so long as the partnership is working well for both parties, we would continue it.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with the Center for Youth Services for the 2024, '25 school year? The contract is not to exceed $300,000 and will be paid through IDA grants.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay, president's remarks, so we had the Monroe County School Board Association meeting, and from, yeah, annual meeting, sorry.
Annual meeting was a great time, and I will let Krista take on the.
Oh, no, 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 my friend. This is your last go-around.
It was the annual meeting, this is where we, again, celebrate the year, we report out on the year, and we elect officers for next year, and I don't, don't even, remember who we elected. Wasn't really paying attention.
Mark's like, I'm done.
All right, thank you. District community, committee meetings, audit committee?
Krista, yeah.
Let me go? Okay.
Goodness, we had our meeting May 30th. It was a pretty quick meeting, everything looks good. We discussed, basically, they took us through the audit engagement process, where we talked about our risk assessment, where they ask where there is more risk and how the focus audit process is, looks at the higher risks that we have in our district, look at compliances to be sure that we're following all the rules, and if we are in compliance, looking to see if we have adequate collateral, excuse me, we look at fraud material to cash and see if there are any concerns there, and if there are, how are these needs gonna be filtered and addressed? We talked about, we'll look at the general fund balance reserve, we need to always be looking forward and be prepared, as Mark had mentioned earlier, making sure that we have the funds in case there's an emergency or something happens, money doesn't come through, through the state or something of that nature, so we can continue to do what's best for our kiddos. Our funds need, that needs to be, need to be committed by September, and we need to spend them by October 31st. But Dan, maybe you can help me out, I don't know what that "no" actually means, what funds?
For the stimulus funds?
Is that, oh, stimulus funds, okay, I forgot it worked, I'm like, I don't know what that meant. We talked about electric bus grants being out there, IT audits that are being done, and basically, we're in a really good place. Then we also talked about our internal claims audit report, which was also very good. We have lots of systems in place that are there to protect, sorry, to protect us, and things looked good. Do you wanna add anything?
No, you did a great job, thank you.
All right, any new business? May I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:17 PM?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?